United States.
All right, all right, I want to call this July 10th, 2024 meeting to order. I'm new to this pledge, yes, sir.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Consider the Republic where wicked fans, one nation under God, indivisible, in the highest heavens, and a just to start off.
Mr. Young.
Yeah, one of that's exonerations, this is a bunch of, most of this is a bunch of tickets that we found that were coming for 24 that were sort of trying to take so right at time to pack something.
Okay, and all this is just real property?
First, we probably mixed in with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just doing them all and watching how much it is here.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the exonerations for real and personal property.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison's on two.
Yeah, and while I'm here, while you're signing it, that vacant office over there in our building, our floor, we would like to get that office, nobody's been in there for a good while and in the, that office, that office basically got this area here, we'd like to get that office if we can.
You want to put it on the agenda?
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. I, I, I think if he just talks to Ruth, um, or Gia and her absence, I'm sure Gia can check in with Ruth and, and see if she had any plans for that office, but if she doesn't, I don't know why we wouldn't.
No, that's fine with me. Okay, all right, presented, thank you. I make a motion to approve payroll through July 26th. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Vouchers and invoices, anybody have any questions?
Um, I, I did, did we resolve, because the two, um, New River Engineering invoices are on there, and I do agree that we need to resolve it, but have, have we decided or determined whether, I guess the decision is, even though, um, the engineering company was supposed to eat the cost of gig ready didn't come through, are we willing to pay the $19,000 that's on there? Um, and I'm not sure what the additional pool money was for either, is Chris there to talk to us?
Chris isn't here, but I did talk to him. The pool was where they went back in and re-drilled to see how deep it was before we hit a void. The 17, nine was for the 16 different options that was given to us for the broadband to possibly run through. That was the initial work that was done before the contract was signed, and from that contract on, any other expenses from that, they were waiting on the grant to come through that we didn't receive.
But we didn't vote to authorize that, it, based on our, our research in the minutes.
Yeah.
Is that?
I mean, I, I don't think we did, I mean, I, I'm a little confused about it, I'd like for him to be here and discuss it with us.
I would prefer for him to be here too, um, maybe, maybe we can reach him, um, while we're getting to other things and see if he can at least, um, chime in on the call or something.
I'll send him a message.
Okay.
Do y'all have a problem approving everything else without that until he calls?
No, uh, no, I don't. I'll move to approve.
Excluding.
Excluding those two items, yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, estate settlements, I don't know whether we can hear this, Ms. Taylor and John, until, uh, Anthony gets back or not, we have Mr. Fast and Ms. Lilly's.
Mr. Bradford.
Brad Bradford here to discuss the estate. You want to wait on Anthony?
I, I think we do need to wait on Anthony for that one, I read through it this morning, um, and, and I have a couple of questions for him. So, um, do we do meeting minutes?
Anthony, so I, I will just advise the commission that, um, it's my understanding, Mr. Bradford's going to withdraw his objection to the submitted final accounting. So, just submit for your information.
And, and that is correct, I'm going to withdraw my objection, uh, Mr. Bass, uh, emailed me and sent me documentation of a breakdown of the accounting, and it does contain that $10,000 that I not believe was included, so it is in fact included, I feel that I will, uh, withdraw my objection and allow this case to settle, I think it's time that this case settles, very old case.
Ten years.
And, and we're asking that, that it finally, uh, be settled, so all beneficiaries can receive what they're due.
Okay, which, which estate is this that we're talking about? Because it, this doesn't sound like the one I'm looking, the document I have in front of me here.
It's the.
Okay.
Let me tell Lily.
I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with us resolving that one now, it's, it's the, um, fish matter that, that I wanted to ask Anthony about, so we can go ahead and, um, what, what, uh, Tom, what are you asking us to do here?
I submitted a proposed final accounting, and, um, it's before you, uh, so there is no, now no objections, it would be just in the normal course of approving the final settlement accounting that's before you, it's the law, it's not a waiver.
Okay, I, I move that we approve that then.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Taking care of it.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 26th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we excused now?
Yes, ma'am. Push it easy. Every day, Alice. Guys, you're going to people's work too. Oh.
Thanks, sir.
Tell Brandon, you may as well.
So will this order be entered today?
We will get it to the show since meeting is over.
All right, Gia.
Number one. Library. One D.
Okay, anybody have a problem with it?
No. What, what was the?
Number one.
Okay, I couldn't hear very well, um, no, I, I don't have a problem with it, so who, who was it that they recommended?
To approve the library board reapport, reappointment of Donna Smith.
Donna Smith.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen.
It was Donna Smith to the library board from Fayetteville? Did she do, she cut out? How can you be freezing to get that?
Four years.
Ms. Taylor?
What is the question, I couldn't hear very well.
I think we lost her.
No, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh. Okay, I mean, I thought you had a question on who was on, we put on the library board.
Oh, I, and John made the motion, and I heard, I heard, I just, I, I saw the paper, I just couldn't remember her name, I just wanted it mentioned for the record, and John did that in his motion.
Okay. Now, number two.
Uh, two requests for ARPA funding from the original request that weren't necessarily looked at or approved.
Yeah, so when, when I read that list off, I, well, when I copied and pasted on my small laptop, I omitted, inadvertently omitted two of those requests that I had intended to move that we approved, one was for the fencing of the Anstead ball field, and the other was for the Canal Falls PSD turbidity meter, Gia, do you have those numbers handy, because I, I didn't, I know the Anstead ball field was like 143,000 something, but I don't remember the Canal Falls, I think it was 20 something thousand.
It was, it's a 21,700. Or something.
And, and the Anstead amount, the exact amount? I can probably find it, I just don't have it pulled up.
Anstead's 143, 145, three.
Okay.
And Canal Falls was on the list, we just neglected to read it out loud.
Well, Anstead was on the list too, I just, that was a copy and paste error on my part. So I, I move that we approve those two requests.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is code service, uh, provision, came back to do one, but we're going to be here.
Any questions, commissioners?
No, I didn't have any questions.
No, my motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one is the, uh, the ship over. Is yours, I did say this word, information?
Yes, this is the development grant we received, um, partial funding for.
Ms. Taylor, I don't know whether you've authorized or not, can, uh, they stamp your name?
Yes.
So this, this, the Thomas signing is, um, just for you all to accept the grant.
Do the commissioners have any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the signing of the grant recipient.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
That's for Memorial Building, the priority list with funding.
Well, so, from what I, I don't think we're ready to fully prioritize how to spend that, that money without input from the park board, which, um, Brian told me hasn't met yet, um, about it, what, I think what we're really trying to address today are those, um, repairs that Amy was talking about, and I think Brian wanted to get a sense from all of us, whether, um, like, how much we would like to go to, you know, building repairs versus upgrades, like to the bathrooms and the aesthetics, like, well, and, and functional things, because the bathrooms are in terrible shape, um, the curtains, um, some other things that'll, you know, fixing the seats and that sort of stuff, so if, I think Brian's there, if he, Brian, if you want to come up and talk to the commissioners about what we discussed.
Okay. Uh, I want to ask, so, so what were you, I talked to Allison yesterday about, she made a recommendation to talk to the park board, to kind of get a couple of things, and John has spoken through a bit this morning, if we think about the 500,000 that we figured that we're going to put into the building, it was also like, how much infrastructure we want to spend, and also how much, like, like the curtains and a few things like that, um, the, Allison made a good point, she said, we could have the, the most sound building in the world, but if inside, it's so dilapidated that people don't want to use it, so we're trying to find that balance of where to allocate that money. Oki's gone this week, he has Sonny doing, I do believe, one or two estimates on a couple of little projects, and then we'll come back to you guys and give you some better numbers, and then kind of where the park board, and then a group of people might kind of present to you what you think should spend this money the best way. Obviously watertight is key, and you've got some stuff that we're working on, you need to do with the, the money.
Well, and I do have a question about, um, this, the previous project we just spoke of, um, the grant that we got funded, one third of the project, um, we had to break that project into three different, um, projects, which was, the first was to get the mortar and, um, the porch back against the building and watertight, so it's not leaking into the basement, and that's what they give, gave us 50, or they gave us, um, quarter funding for, we had to come up with the other half, or quarter funding of the entire project. The next two parts is to, um, fill the cracks on the deck, and then, uh, and do some mortar replacement there, and then also, um, put a sealant on, but they have to remove the sealant too, which is about half of the cost, so I didn't know if you guys wanted us, when we bid this project out, to only bid out the portion that was approved by the grant, or if we want to do this all as one big project together, and so the entire quote that we got was 73,000, um, for the entire porch, and we have 14,500 in grant funding, so, um, 35,000 would be to just fix the porch, um, structure, and then the other part would be to, um, watertight the entire thing.
For 35?
For another 35.
I, I spoke to Oki on this one, he put that as his top priority, so I'm, I'm good with that one, if you guys will think about that one, that seems like something that you got, you've had in the works for a while, and that's a great place to start, I was up on the building, we looked at the, the gutter systems to the one side and stuff like that, that's a whole nother entity there, but this porch part, to get started is, is a key.
And also, I, I know everyone's noticed, um, that the railings at the memorial building are roped off, because when FEMA was there, they deemed them, um, unsafe for their purposes, um, so we do have a quote now too, we got it yesterday, I didn't look at it, but, um, it was in my mailbox, um, to replace those handrails, so that would be a good project in conjunction with that, to kind of.
Yes. Obviously, safety is safety first.
And we will, so, we've been, we've been instructed to by a structural engineer that the decorative railings that go around the porch are not up to code, um, their, the spindles are more than four inches apart, and they're not tall enough, but Shippo has given me some ideas of how to keep those and just kind of add to them to bring them up to code, so that could be later, though.
Amy, could you add the scope of the earmark request that we put in, so everybody understands what, what kind of grants and requests we've already put out, and that we're hoping to get funded through those avenues?
Sure, um, and the first project that just pushed up, they still have the scaffolding down there, but it's coming down soon, um, that was about an $80,000 project to, um, fix that dangerous mortar and brick and wood, um, deterioration, um, and so then we've put in a earmark request for $307,000 that would finalize, um, the mortar and wood replacement, um, on the other sides of the building, um, the company that was doing that work actually offered us a discount, um, in the mobilization fees, um, if we continued with that, but we still have to put it out to bid, now they did offer that maybe we could do a change of, change order on the original contract to maybe do one other side of the building, if they wanted, if the commission wanted to fund that, but that would be before we got earmark funding. So he, he brought that up yesterday, and I said I would mention it to you today, so there's just another option.
I'll tell you personally, I'm not inclined to spend any of the money we allocated for fixing the memorial building for something that we hope to get earmark funding for, um, at this point, even though there's a discount, um, if we were to do it, because there's just so much we have to do, as Amy pointed out, we, you know, we would have to rebid it anyway, like, we wouldn't, we can't just automatically go.
Let me ask Brad a question, or Amy a question, or either one of them. Oh gosh, I forgot my question. So, listen to everybody, if, if earmark does not, you know, maybe it's, if earmark does not come, um, would it be more important to fix what we're requesting on the earmark?
I think that's our number one priority right now, is that roof and water situation on the top of the building.
And the roofers, did they tell you this too, that they said we've probably got about five years left in the actual roof itself?
How long have we got to make a decision? If earmark, what do we know about the earmark?
I will tell you that I got a call from Carol Miller yesterday, Representative Carol Miller, and she funded, um, at, at this point, her earmark funds, um, half of one of the vehicle recommend, uh, requests we got, that we sent out for those sheriff's department, so hopefully, that means some other decisions might be made by other senators soon, but I can't.
Well, how long is the contractor?
Well, he's done, so, hi- his last ditch to get him to stay was to do a change order, so I just said I would bring that up today, but I, I, I kind of agree, I'd like to wait and see.
And the change order they're working on, and really, the benefit from what I understand is, instead of taking down the scaffolding, and it basically, the scaffolding would stay at the on-site and just move versus taking it away, that, that was $6,000, $6,000, our savings right off the bat, was basically labor and scaffolding and moving.
Okay.
It was around the, the, the to, he sent me another quote, and the total to do the entire project would save us $30,000.
Yeah, but that was just the one part of scaffolding, that's, that's just like kind of a little perks there.
Yeah.
Well, I think I agree with Ms. Taylor, I wanted them questions answered before.
I don't think that the other sides are as dangerous, they're not in danger of falling like the library side was.
Well, and if something like that happens, then we need to block it off, you know, put, put something around, you know, to keep people from walking under it, but, um, Amy, with regard to Carol Miller's call, because it seems to me like they have to put, they have to put those earmarks through Congress, and then they either get approved or not, so is she at the stage where she is putting us on her recommendation list for Congress, or that she did do that and Congress approved it?
She made it sound like we're getting the money, it was a phone call, not in writing, but she was, because that was the second, that was the second call I'd gotten from her, the first one was a few months ago, and she said she was putting us forward, and then yesterday she called and said that it was approved.
Okay, well, that's, so, yeah, so we should hear something really soon about that, it's not like we're going to spend $500,000 in the next, you know, two weeks, if, if that's how long it's going to take us to figure that out, but, but I do think there are just all those technicalities with, with using that same contractor without rebidding the project, even though it would stink to do that, you know, it would be great to be able to have consistency there, I don't think we can circumvent those requirements.
Yeah.
So you just want to make a motion to postpone this until, um, we hear back from the earmarks?
Yeah, I would like to do that, and I would like for us to meet with the, uh, park board, do a, an extra meeting, I hate to say that, but that way we can all be on the same page and try to get all of our priorities together, so we're looking at the same things.
That's a good idea, maybe we can workshop it like we did when we were talking about funding and get the American Legion to come and, and everybody, so we can have all the heads in the same room as we prioritize this, um, but I think the park board probably needs to meet first and discuss its position before we have that overall meeting, so they have some recommendations for us.
Yes, I agree, I don't have a problem with it.
Brian, when did you say they were going to meet again?
It's the, it's the second Wednesday of next month.
Okay. So maybe just get it, I don't, I don't think we, well, I mean, we could postpone it, but I, this was just a discussion topic, I think we could just place it back on the agenda, I don't think we have to vote on this.
So they're going to meet on the 14th? Okay, yeah, let, we'll place it back on the, uh, agenda for the last meeting in August, maybe before that, because it's a meeting on the 14th.
So they give us some time too, if you've got a couple quotes out there, we can give you a couple of numbers, and also as a workshop concept, Allison, like you mentioned, we can see, again, crowd, it's, uh, infrastructure and stuff that looks good, to, all, all the way from like the flame curtains, bathrooms, and things like that, to find the, find the right blend of money spending.
Let's make sure that both Oki and Sonny, um, and, and Jerry, and, and all of those folks attend that meeting too, because I want, I want the, the maintenance perspective on, on this, to see what they might be able to do versus having to bid stuff out and that sort of thing, and what their recommendations are with their expertise, possibly even Alan Ballard, if we're getting into some major stuff, but.
And I'll, uh, soon as we're done with the meeting, I'll send everybody, um, a scan of that quote for the handrails, just so we can see.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, I don't know what Tom and John feel about this, but I think we do need to move forward on the porch that Brian mentioned and the handrails, um, you know, out of that, out of those funds, if we end up having to allocate more funds down the road for, you know, to backfill than we can, but, but to me, that's a safety issue, and, and if, if everybody agrees that porch work is the top priority, I don't see why we wouldn't, it's not a significant amount of money.
They're asking for a little bit for that, and there's rails, especially now that we have kind of a little bit of attention drawn to them, let's, I think, to take care of this quickly.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
We might be able to squeeze a couple more in before 9:30, we'll try to get six to you.
Number six, is the West Virginia Conservation Agency agreement, I believe it was, I got it in the last meeting.
This is the one I thought that Anthony said it was still enforced until 2025, and he was asking why we were going to sign a new one.
He was gonna, he, I think he's been in touch with, um, Judith, well, he was going to talk to Judith about it, so maybe we need to wait for him.
Why don't we wait on Anthony on this one?
I agree.
I'm good with that, number seven.
Number seven is the Canal Falls, we received the letter where they did want to, um, take over Armstrong Creek sewer, and then we sent the letter to the town.
Okay, let me, uh, since the hearing was held yesterday, I'll give you a little update on this one, um, everything was going well, and then Commissioner Lang, uh, made the statement that West Virginia American Water would be taking over Armstrong Creek, um, PSD sewer, um, so I'm waiting on the exact wording that was used, uh, according to what I understand in other cases, usually they publish their notes, uh, three to four days after their hearings, so, once the, the hearing pages have been posted, I'll have a better idea of what exactly the wording that she used, um, but it, it looks like West Virginia American Water is trying to take over everything, uh, in the Charleston Valley coming up toward us, so, until we.
So.
I will.
I'm sorry, John, I, I need some clarification, so Commissioner Lang, um, does Commissioner Lang make all the decisions, or was this a statement, or was this something they voted on, or?
It was a statement, so that's why I'm waiting on the notes from the hearing, so I can see the exact wording that was used, um, but in so many words, she just said that West Virginia American Water was taking over everything at Armstrong Creek.
I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the commissioner, you make a recommendation, we, we can't change it, but I think we can make a recommendation anyway, whether it's good or not.
We, we did already, I think, and this, this, last meeting, remember, Tom, we, we did it last meeting, and then we had to do it nut pro tonk, because Canal Falls took, took a while, so, so I'm going to move that we approve the action we already took due to the time-sensitive nature of it, um, nut pro tonk.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Basically, that's why I was asking that question, I didn't think we could change anything.
Yeah, we can't.
Right, right.
And also, while we're talking about PSDs really quick, um, we may have an issue with Paige Kincaid, the DUP was there yesterday, I'm researching that also, and I'll have more information, can give it out to everybody as soon as I get it.
We'll try to get, you done?
Yeah.
We'll try to get eight in real fast.
So, really, everything for eight, it's a contract.
I can, yeah, so Dan Sneed wrote up the contract and, uh, for the roofing, um, project, and sent it to Sutter Roofing, and we put it on the agenda, um, kind of for time's sake, so, um, we were hoping that we would have the signed copy back from Sutter by the meeting, but, um, in its absence, I was kind of hoping that you all would approve Tom signing it once it returns and once Anthony takes a look at it. All right.
So we. I move that we do that, I move that we do that, and.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, and Tom, with regard to number nine, I made edits to the letter that, um, Amy and Gia sent, and I wanted Anthony to both look at the letter and the reporting form before we send it out, but I think, you know, all I, I didn't make any substantive changes to the letter other than add, like, have, ask them to add contact information and stuff like that to be a little more specific, um.
Was that the one you emailed this morning?
Yeah, yeah, it is, and so, I, I feel like we could probably go ahead and approve it, um, pending any recommendations from Anthony, I just want to make sure from a legal perspective that we've included everything he thinks we need to, in case we have issues down the road enforcing, um, the agreement, because the form is actually an agreement they have to sign about how they're going to spend the money, I, I added to the form, or asked them to add to the form, the provision that they needed to spend it according to the ARPA guidelines that the federal government has laid out, um, and that they, you know, and that they're also agreeing to provide the quarterly accounting we requested and stuff like that, but, um, but I think Anthony needs to look at it, because if we're going to try to enforce it down the road, you know, he needs to have some say into what we're doing, you know?
I don't have a problem with it.
So, I, I'll, I'll move that we approve, um, sending the letter and the form as soon as Anthony has, has reviewed it and given his input.
My second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, we want to public carry, we got one minute, but Angela, do you want to?
And we can stamp everybody's names on the letters.
Well, she's.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, we don't have a problem.
Thank you.
All right, at nine thirty, we have a, um, request for a change of land classification. It is case number Z dash five zero dash twenty-four dash two. It's a request of Triple T Inc., a West Virginia corporation, which is the owner for a change of land classification from what is currently rural residential to a planned unit development on property legally described as surf fifty-three point nine one three PT Davis Lands, Wolf Creek, New Haven District.
Excuse me, wait there a second.
Yes.
I have the surf fifty-two dot nine one three.
It may have just been copied. What was in the newspapers, fifty-three point nine one three?
Fifty-three point nine one three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So what was in the newspapers? Um, you guys should have received the copy of the minutes from the planning commission meeting that was held on July first. Um, I'm just, normally I just, I don't read the whole minutes. It just, um, says, Mr. Davis motions to deny the request. Come for seconds and it's unanimous decision. So it is brought before the county commission for, um, your guys vote to want this.
So, tell Angela, remind us, because we don't hear these very often, what our options are.
So, um, you should have also gotten the application in your packets, but basically the county commission, you can either vote to accept the planning commission's recommendation, um, or you guys can also vote to approve the applicant's recommending, or applicant's application. Um, that's up to the county commission. Um, if you guys wanted to kick it back for a reason, you could send it back to the planning commission. Um, so you kind of can, you guys have the power to, um, make the ultimate decision, so.
So you could, if the request is for more information, the commission can kick it back.
It can go back to the, that, that is an option if you guys had, but you would have to give detail why you wanted them to re-discuss it or.
I read the minutes, uh, and one of the concerns I have, like this, this came up when we were talking about doing the visitor center. It kind of sounded like a similar conversation about traffic lights and stuff like that. That to me, you know, if we, i- if we deny requests based on that, nobody's gonna develop anything around here. Like, you know, the DOH or DOT, I can't remember which organization at the state level, but the state will manage traffic things. And, and I feel like this also kind of reminded me of another, um, application that we had in where you know, people didn't want to accept, um, offers from the property owner to remediate their concerns. So, like, I'm trying to understand why they denied it without, you know, like, why it wouldn't have been good enough for the property owner to, to remediate the concerns and why, um, you know, they're not leaving it up to the state organization that's responsible for traffic safety to implement the proper, you know, provisions on nineteen or where, wherever the concern was. So I'm, I'm trying to understand why, how they, why they didn't push back on that.
Right. I mean, they, when they vote, they don't have to give a reason why they vote or deny it. Um, and if you rezon, it's just the property, like the roads, that really should have a determination because it's the property you're rezoning. Um, so the planning commission, you know, they, they might have taken it in consideration, but they don't have to give a reason for their denial.
Josh, in, in the minutes, and Josh did say the reason he was denying it is none of that information, but what Josh said.
Uh, okay, I, I want, I wanted to clarify something. Okay, so Tom, this is your property, right?
I can't vote on it, but I can talk about it, I'm sure.
Okay.
I mean, it would be just like if he was an applicant. You would ask the applicant questions.
You can ask me questions.
All right, so do we have anything from the health department about sewer or anything on utilities? And road access?
We have road access, but do you need utilities, sewer, electric, power, gas?
The ordinance says a site plan, um, it does say you need, um, infrastructure for residential houses, but the ordinance does not say you have to have, it does, that's part of the planning commission's questions normally is infrastructure. That portion of the ordinance doesn't specifically say you have to have, uh, infrastructure. That's up to the planning commission to ask those questions.
And I do wanna mention, if the commission doesn't mind, the two parts I want to resume commercial. One of them is four hundred feet to the closest house. The other one is six hundred and sixty-three, six hundred and sixty-three feet to the next house. There's four hundred feet in between the commercial property and wanted, a piece of property wanted to be zoned in the nearest house, and six hundred and sixty-three feet from that piece of property to the nearest house. Steve has property on Tomco that is closer, that is zone business that is closer to houses than that, than the property I want to reset.
Do you have some, it shows maps very least.
Yeah, we have a big map. I was fretting out big maps for all of them.
And.
Yeah, I was having a little trouble with that too, the maps.
I thought it was just my eyes for a second.
Mary's property actually joins commercial property.
Who, who's property, Tom?
Mary, the other lady here, her property actually joins commercial property. When the property I want to rezone, it's probably about, I didn't estimate that. I didn't have the engineer estimate, but it's probably eight hundred feet away from her house, where her house joins commercial property. Not my property, but it is property.
Oh, okay, so the road goes into title sheets.
Yeah, there is an access. That red dotted line is an access.
Okay, why is there such a big gap in between the two areas that wants to be zoned? It's planned.
In other words, that's the two pieces of property I consider commercial. I wanted to keep the other property away from houses. If you, if you look at this, this is all, in fact, my lawyer presented it in this, it said there would be a gap of property, a buffer in between do, these two pieces of commercial property and the, and the houses. The four hundred foot buffer and a six hundred and sixty-three foot buffer.
So other than not enough information, nobody gave any other edification of why they recommended against it?
Right, not at their motion.
Well, I mean, but then I'm, I'm wondering, Angela, like, why wouldn't the planning commission, like, if we needed more information, when we're gonna vote on something, we'll just postpone the matter and let the person or party presenting to us bring the additional information in before we make a decision. So I'm, I'm just, is that not something the planning commission can do?
Um, historically, they don't, um, but it's, I don't know that legally.
But can be.
I don't wanna, yeah, our book does not say one way or the other. It says at their meeting, they make a recommendation. So I don't know, I mean, if we've never had it done, but doesn't mean it can't be.
Well, they have recommended before on a plan to do away with the US Route nineteen corridor management.
Right, they asked you guys. I mean, that's the only time they did, um, when the Route nineteen corridor management was planned, they did not wanna make a decision because they weren't sure why it wanted to be.
So they did recommend, they come, they come back to the commission twice.
Correct.
So they can make a recommendation.
Yeah.
I believe they could.
Well, I think if they wanted more information, then they should get more information before they make a decision. Like, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna make an uninformed decision. That's, that's a concern I have with what happened here. Um, you know, other than the other ones that I, I mentioned, like I, you know, to me, like, when people were talking about the visitor center, I mean, yes, those are concerns, you know, about highway signs and all this stuff and whether there's a light. But that's not enough to not do it, you know, that, you know, there are organizations within our government that will address those issues, if they become issues. So I, I just, I, I'd kind of like to send it back to the planning commission, let them get the information they needed to be, to make a fully informed recommendation to us. What are your thoughts, John?
Allison, we have a zoning board appeals process. Correct.
We do. So if, depending on what the county commission votes, if the county commission votes to approve it and the people who are against it, they can request the board of zoning appeals to overturn your guys' decision, basically. Um, if you guys did vote to send it back to the planning commission, you would have to give them questions you wanted answered, because you're just taking their recommendation. But they're not required to give a reason why they do or don't want a property from you.
Well, they, they, but Josh did, he did stay in here. There's not enough information.
But that's him as a single.
But they, but there was a second on the same motion.
Right, so.
Okay, my thoughts are also that we have a board in place. They made a decision on things that you know, I don't know a whole lot about. Um, and that's their position is to do that. So they make a recommendation to us and then we choose off of their recommendation.
So it, but is it your, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And since there is a process in plan or in, in place for an appeal of a zoned that's turned down or not approved, then we should follow that process.
My concern is that a board member and, and expressed that he didn't have enough information. And I don't wanna set a precedent, and, and Angela is saying that they normally just, if they don't have enough information, they're gonna make a decision based on what they have. Um, I think, I don't wanna s- I don't wanna send a message to people if they're not properly prepared for this highly complicated process when they go in, um, that they're gonna get denied if they do something wrong, like a social security disability claim or something. Like, I, I, I want them to, to have a mechanism in place whereby if they need more information, that they get it before they come to us for a final decision, because what is our function? You know, you're saying we have this process, but, but like, what is our function if we're not examining that process? Because otherwise, then it should just go directly to appeal and not through us at all. Like, I, I I just don't like that somebody said they didn't, he didn't have enough information, somebody else agreed, and then now we have a, a recommendation for a denial based on an incomplete data set.
The other thing is, it, it, and as a commissioner, if the process we presently have isn't the way the planning commission thinks it should be with information, the only information that an applicant has to send, then they need to change the process. They need to request a change of process, send it to the commission, let the commission vote on it. Because by the applicant, application, what was submitted is exactly what the minimum required.
Man, good speaker.
That's up to the commission, John.
Okay, I didn't know if I had to sign something.
Yeah, we go ahead and, and let.
Okay, well, as far as the way I see it.
If you would, come on up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Okay, I'm Steve Luises. The way I see it is if the zoning requires you have a plan in utilities, he has neither one. Okay, then he has no access to the property. He can go on one side of Ankle Road, but you have to have a real good Jeep to get down there and back. And these, there's no way in, no way out, and as far as if there's no requirement for anything, as he, he has no, uh, plan. And it was turned down in oh five, because he didn't have a plan. Doesn't have a plan today. Does this mean that when anybody comes in and they want their property zoned from now on, they don't have to have a plan? If you have to have a plan, you gotta have a plan, and you have to have utilities. Now, if he has neither one of those, does the next person have to have it? So you said something, if this doesn't need it, the next guy comes along, won't need it either. So that's what I feel.
That, that's not, that's not what we were saying, uh, or what I was saying. What I was saying is that the person who's making the application should have the opportunity to present the full plan and everything the planning commission needs. And if, if, if their application is lacking in some way, they should have the opportunity to complete the application before a decision is made.
I mean, but, but it seems like that he is very knowledgeable, because in oh five, they did the same thing. Oh five was turned down because he did not have a plan. Okay, now, what's different? You, you would have a hard time telling me that he did not know he needed a plan. Now, because that's part of the SCAR, you gotta have a plan, you gotta utilities. If he's got a plan, say what the plan is. And if the plan is, then we can all approve, and we all feel, so okay, then I'm sure that we wouldn't have the, look, object to it. First, the US Route nineteen corridor management plan was in effect when I put, first put my plan in. The other thing is, does anybody know what a non- con- con- competitive clause is in a contract? Non-competitive clause in a contract. Reason Steve's here is because he's afraid that if this is rezoned, that I'll take some of his development out there and/or that when somebody lea- leases or buys my property, that is in the same business as what he has leased, his pay, his lease payments drop to fifty percent. I don't know the exact figure, but the non-competitive clause and then leases, his money will go from say fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand if that business is put in. No, I'm a business person. If he has something developed on that, I'm happy, because it's more traffic for me. Any business would know that the traffic is a plus. Now, if he had a plan, say what the plan is. And if it is, that's okay. He, you can approve it, or anybody can approve it. But if he doesn't have a plan, that's what is required. If not, I'm afraid of something, you've got to do it.
Okay, okay, here, here, here's my take, here's my take on both of those things. One, you know, uh, Commissioner Luises, you know, he can, he can object for whatever reason, you know, whether he's, you know, like any property owner could. I mean, somebody might not, just not want something there, might not like you, or whatever the issue is. Um, he can object and, and it should carry the weight that the board wants to give it, but, um, but at, at the same time, um, to the other Mr. Luises, um, whatever his plan or whatever he did in two thousand and five is not something that I'm, that I'm wanting to consider. I mean, what I, you know, whether or not he should have known, I, we've gotta treat him like any other property owner, whether or not he should have known, he should have had all these things. Planning Commission sent a, sent a message that it didn't have enough information. He now has a good idea of what information he has to get together to, to, you know, put a full case in front of the planning commission. And, you know, and I don't know what we're gonna do if John and I are split on this, because you know, I mean, I, I'd like to send it back to the planning commission so it can get the information it needs. I don't want to make a decision today based on, especially with the knowledge that they didn't have everything they needed to make their decision. And I would feel that way, whether it was Commissioner Luises or any other citizen before this commission. I just don't like the idea that one of our boards has an incomplete data set, that one of our boards has an incomplete data set and they're making a decision based on that, knowing they didn't have all the information. So you know, I wouldn't want that to happen to anybody.
So Allison, I just wanna read what's required, because there's been some things that's. So in order to file for a rezoning of a property, it says a request for rezoning of property shall be filed on prescribed forms, which were done. Um, and then the zoning office will identify adjoining property owners, which I sent all the adjoining property owners notice. All the applicant must submit is tax math and parcels information. So it wasn't that the application was incomplete. Basically, the planning commission just didn't have, so I don't know if kicking it back, because pretty much you have to submit the same application originally. So I don't know if it's sent back exactly what could be heard. We may have to check with Anthony on that, because he did submit a correct application. There's nothing that says he has to provide infrastructure.
Well, and, and here's the thing too, like, like what if the planning commission during its hearing learns, here's the citizens' concerns and here's all this stuff, but they need to verify some of this stuff, you know, if, whether it's a property line dispute or, or whatever, like if they needed more information, you know, why wouldn't it go back and, and say, okay, you know, Mr. Luises, we're not willing to, you know, approve this today with the information we have, but you know, you can come back with, with this additional, we'll, we we'll set you for another hearing, give you the opportunity to provide the rest of that. I mean, I I just feel like there's, there's something amiss in that process. Surely this isn't a unique situation where a citizen comes in and doesn't have all the information they need. And I don't like the idea that it's before us, before a fully vetted, that, or fully informed decision is made.
They could have, but they did already vote. I mean, you know, that would have been their option. They could have, but they did already vote. I mean, you know, that would have been their option to table it or request more information, but they did not. So.
Yeah, which is the reason I want to, I want to send it back to them. So I'm going to move that we send it back to the planning commission. If John doesn't second, then we're going to have to ask Anthony what to do.
Well, I I would like to say that we do have a process in place where it goes to the zoning board of appeals. Um, if it has been turned down.
If it's been turned down for no, you know, if 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 ever, all the information is in and it's been turned down, but all the information isn't in, like I I think the Board of Zoning Appeals and and all of that should be made once a a fully informed decision is made by the planning commission. I don't think we need to uh you know, go through the whole appeals process if all the information isn't in in the first place. You know, that's to me, it's I just don't understand why they did that.
Well, I keep playing through my mind, other folks who have come in before us. They brought in um stuff from the health department that says, yes, they can have sewer, their utilities and what their actual plan is, whether it be yurts or cabins or tents.
They have a specific.
Glam.
They they want specifically be B three. This applicant is asking for plan development. Um, and that is his plan is those two parcels to be anything within the B two. That is his plan. I mean, the um, I don't know if planning mission didn't like that, but that's what the plan was submitted. So that's why the infrastructure. Because he may have a B two that doesn't require infrastructure, you know, so but.
And then I keep thinking that we have a a group in place, even though I can agree with with what Commissioner Taylor's saying. I uh, I think that we should follow what the board recommended to us. Commissioner Taylor believes that we should um send it back to them. But is there a process in place for sending it back to them? And is there a certain amount of time in which the applicant would have to wait or could it be done automatically the next month?
That would have to be an Anthony question. I've never had to send one back to the planning. So I don't want to speak on what information would be allowed to go back.
Well, you said that our that we would have to have specific questions. I mean, my question is, you know, did you have all of the information you needed? I mean, Josh Davis said he didn't. And and do you have a process to to ensure you have all the information you need to make a decision before you make one? Like, to me, that's that's just improper. Like I have a problem with that, period. Um, and I I don't want anybody to be in the position and and I I understand what you're saying, John. I mean, when but I think what Angela is saying is that when those people came in, they had a specific plan for the property when they were going to put in a campground and stuff. And and I think the distinction here is this is, you know, more of a a development that hasn't been, you know, sold or, you know, fully planned out. So they don't necessarily know what's going in there. Is that right?
Yeah, so basically the applicant in his request, the two parcels that he wanted B two would be anything that falls in our allowed B two. So it's it's more of a development plan. It's not very specific. It doesn't have to be specific. It can be anything in the B two, whether it be a a hotel or a gift shop or anything that falls under the list of B two items.
Where's the junkyard ball?
It's not B two. It would be industrial.
Okay. I just wanted to.
And 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 that's what I was saying earlier is if if the planning commission wants it specific, they need to do away and change the whole planning, the code. Do away with the process because that said, anything under B two. What they need to do is specify you have to pick out something in B two if they want to change it.
Okay, we also have another lady that would like to speak. You just went back and sit down. I'm sorry. Come on up here, Mary.
Yeah, I do want to hear from if there's anybody in there uh who wants to speak on this.
I'm so good. Tell us your name and.
Okay, my name is Mary Parsons and I own the property between Mister Luises. And also the property between me and my company, which is Matt Winder. Okay, in two thousand and five, I was in this same basically meeting with the Luises, Tom Senior and Tom Junior sitting there. And he was turned down at that point because he had no plan at all to develop the same property. And as far as the information going about this being access to all the utilities, with the exception of city water, which goes through my property onto Tommy, to Tommy Luises's property, there is no utilities. There's no, there's no sewage. It would have to come from Fayetteville. Or from Steve Luis's property.
It's Fayetteville, right?
I mean.
It's Fayetteville, right?
Yes. And there's no way to get power. At one point, Tom Junior put an old trailer in down there. And he, the power company wanted to get a thirty-foot roadway from me to put power into this old dilapidated trailer he put in down on his property.
I didn't know, I didn't know about that, Mary.
Don't tell me you don't know about this.
Okay, good.
I'm too old to play games here. Way too old. Okay. When I get done, I'll sit down. Okay, um. There was the problem that they were discussing with an access in and out. He does not have an access in and out of this property. Uh, other than a cow trail on top of the hill above Anna Burns. And that would be infringing on Thousand Oaks Whispering Lane, Barrington Hill. And they're not going to let him make a main entrance in and out of there. And I feel like if he gets eight acres approved, he's going to go with the whole fifty-three acres.
Is there not an entrance there besides sheets going into that property?
Goes to a high wall, which last maybe he said he could get up that wall with a vehicle or something, I guess. I'd like to see somebody go up that wall. If that has a bearing on this, you can't get up the wall. The road goes, we take it's right away. He can get to the high wall. Now, he can't get on that property front there. True.
No, I I can get to it, Steve.
Here are my con- here are my concerns.
I'm not arguing, but I'd like for everybody here to go there, look behind that trailer, that uh tractor and see if you can go there and go right up that high wall. If you can go up the high wall, then you should have this thing approved. It's not two people arguing, it's just the truth.
And I'm not saying what here.
I mean, and again, if it was a plan and it was something positive, I'd be right here saying I'm happy with it. I don't care what he puts there because it would help my business. I don't care what he puts there. But if he can get up that high wall with that right away, everybody should go out there and look at that unless he's got an airplane or helicopter.
So, uh, Ms. Ms. Parsons, did you have anything more to to tell us?
I know that whenever Matt Winter tried to get uh access off the nineteen into his property, which is a twelve-point five acres that it joins mine. The the D O H in Elizabeth completely turned that in. So, you know, I don't know how much, you know, there is no entrance into this property.
It so here's, here's where I am on this. This these things about infrastructure, I mean, they are going to be important considerations for whoever develops that property. We have property all over the county that doesn't have infrastructure and eventually if the right, like we have property right now out at Wolf Creek Park that doesn't have infrastructure, that whoever ends up developing it is going to have to study and figure out those problems. And if they can't figure out the problems, then they're not going to be able to develop. So I don't think, I don't, I distinguish those from this zoning issue. I understand you know, where your cons- concerns are, but if if these problems, what the wall or the access roads or the infrastructure are challenges for that property, those are going to be things that the property owner and the developer are going to have to figure out in order to develop there. And if they can't, then it's it's not going to get developed. But but to me, that doesn't impact what is developed there, like whether we are going to zone it to, you know, allow businesses in there or zone it residential. Whatever it is, those problems are going to exist for whatever type of development it is. So I I think the question before us right now is is, you know, whether John and I can agree on on what to do. And, you know, I I just don't like the idea that our planning commission, that any of our boards are making decisions without a complete set of data. Um, and so that's, that's my concern with with this particular case because that was an issue that's been raised.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak uh for or against this property? Okay. You need to come up to the front, say your name.
Uh, my name's Greg Farnett, four fifty-two Barrington Hill Road. I live in the neighborhood. Uh, it's um, the, I I agree, I heard, I I heard the last part of Miss Taylor's uh comment. Uh, I I don't understand how a planning commission can plan, how a uh a zoning commission can zone if you don't know what we're planning, then we don't know what we're zoning. Um, it puts, it puts our commissions in a terrible position. A complete um plan of of development should be required. It is not required by law. I understand. But until we we know what goes in, what we know what is is going to be developed, how can we develop? How can we, if the county will develop us instead of us developing the county? Um, that's the first issue. It's an incomplete submission for for no plan of what is is going to be done. We can't just work off of promises and I think it has to be, this is what we're going to do. This is the direction we're going to go. This is what we're going to be with um, what with what county is is how the county is to be developed. And I I for that reason, for one of those reasons, I I'm against. The other is increased safety issues at the intersection of Hinkle Road. We do have two businesses at the at the end of those roads. However, that's been zoned and taking care of them in the past. There's nothing we can do about that. But we do have, we do have a large uh population of that community that is retirement age or older. They are going to have to deal with any commercial traffic that would may come in on Hinkle Road. That right now, it doesn't go any further than the Doves Outlet Village that is currently there. And it would increase the amount of traffic to where we could put our citizens at danger in trying to just get home, just get home. And 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 we we have to think about that too. I know Miss Daggers was here at the uh planning commission meeting. And she said she tried to get stoplights to put it there, but the Department of Highways is, for whatever reason, saying no, that's their 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 issue is not ours. So we're not going to be able to put uh stoplights there. We're going to increase traffic at Hinkle Road. We're going to put our our citizens at risk. There's no plan of how it's going to be developed. And there's a list of class B which you can put in 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 there. And it just doesn't seem like it's a complete plan. So therefore, the zoning commissions, the planning commissions are at a disadvantage. And the county commission is at a disadvantage. There's no plan, no plan of a- of 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 action. So for that reasons, I would have to say, as a resident of that neighborhood and a resident of Fayette County, I would like to say I I'm against it.
Mister Fern- Mister Farnett, uh uh to your points though, I think, I think what in the past, we've learned with the stoplight issue. When D O H refuses, it's based on data. They study the intersection and they don't think there's enough traffic, so they don't do it. I think if the traffic were to increase there, they would have to reconsider that decision. Um, but, you know, so I wouldn't, I mean, uh, for what it's worth, uh, that's just something that's come up before. When we've tried to get them to put lights in different places and, you know, they they base it on their study of the traffic at the time. Um, so I I think that that could be mitigated. But um with regard to the plans, I I mean, I would love to to know what everybody's planning to do with their property, but we can't. I don't think we can micromanage development in that way. Um, because that's, that's what zoning is is for, like where where we're trying to keep certain types of businesses or certain types of development, you know, confined to certain areas. And if you think about um, in the terms of like vape shops and things that you might not want, you know, near schools or or things like that. Um, but we we haven't, and I don't think we can, um, if something's like Wolf Creek Park right now, it's a mixed use development. And we don't know exactly what's going to go in out there until the developer, a developer signs up for it and comes up with a plan. Um, you know, I I don't think we're going to be able to as as a county grow if we're saying, you know, um, okay, Amazon, we don't want Amazon here because we don't agree with the politics or something. So we're not going to, you know, let an Amazon come in. I mean, we we just can't, you know, we can't restrict it to that level or or we're not going to grow at all. Um, that's, that's, that's my opinion based, you know, based on what your concerns are. And I understand as a resident of that neighborhood, you know, you may have other concerns about what you want um, in that area. And that's, to me, that's separate from what our responsibility is.
Well, and the response to that, first of all, you were talking about a property that is already zoned commercial, not residential to commercial. This is an application to zone something from residential to commercial with no plan and what we're going to do in that area commercial. And that is my objection. My objection is, and a- until we go that route, until we get into that point of we're going to take land away that we could put for our homes or for people to live there. We're going to have to have a clear uh plan of what direction we're going in that area. And is there a need? We have no idea. Is, we know there is a need for residential area. We understand that in our county. We are a county of forty-three thousand people, but the town of Huntington alone has forty-four thousand in their city limits. So we understand in Fayette County, we are, we are partially populated. Compared, we're the sixth largest landmass county in the net in the state. So we are partially populated. Now we're taking more and more residential area which is not going to help us grow our population and put it commercial now. The other result could be, well, if you bring commercial businesses in, then residents will follow. That's a good argument. That's a mitigating circumstance that we would have to have to consider. However, the areas that you talked about were already zoned commercial. There's nothing we can do once it's been zoned commercial. If a a business wants to in our county, but we do not have to bend over to 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 take care of things when we have no idea what's coming in. That is residential right now. The application is to make it commercial. We have no idea why. We don't, we that, to me, the plan should be more complete. If you wish this action to take place, you should uh tell us how you're going to supply power, utilities, I mean, access? And what what type of business you're wanting to 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 put in before we change our zoning that has been zoned residential to accommodate your needs. That should just be common courtesy. And I mean, and just good business practice, in my opinion, just good business. If you, if you're working with the county rather than saying, hey, help me out, get me in here. And then I'll tell you later what I'm going to do. That's just not good business. I I don't, I I just couldn't support that. If if they're going to be so uh uh non-transparent, then why? Is there a reason? Then they could be known. Let's be transparent if if it's what we want to do. So let's be transparent with the county. Let's be transparent with our county commission. Let's be transparent with our zoning planning commission. Let's be kept transparent with our zoning commission. Those entities exist for a reason.
But what if, what if the owner of the property does not know? You know, hasn't marketed it for development because it is a residentially zoned and doesn't know who's going to develop it or what's going to go in there. I mean, I don't know, and you know, we were very careful not to discuss this um among ourselves because it involved Commissioner Luisos. Um, but so I don't know what his plans are and if he has plans, but I'm I'm just in general terms, like what if the property owner doesn't know until they find out or hasn't sought out, you know, developers without knowing whether they can even rezone it?
But Mike, actually, that would be you put the the horse before the cart. Until you know, this is not a permanent thing. There's nothing that stops uh, later uh, uh, applications to be submitted. Once you have figured it out, and once you have a good plan, once you know how the utilities are going to be run, how the sewage is going to be taken care of, how the power is put to it. Once you know these things, then resubmit with a proper plan, a complete plan. And then there would be a more um, a more uh, 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 information available for our commissions to make decisions. But at this point in time, with no plan, with no uh, direction, my vote would have to be, or my 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 thought in that community would have to be, I would petition the county commission to deny this application.
So Greg, you're saying that if I put a plan together, I need to specify what I'm going to put developed out there?
It's not required by law, but it would be transparent, yes.
So you're saying if a man wants to go out and he has two thousand acres, he's got twenty million dollars to develop commercially. And he says, I don't know exactly what I want to put there, but I got twenty million dollars to develop this project to bring in businesses under B two. You're going to deny it because you don't have a plan?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if there are no, there are no objections to it, then there would be no objections. However, Mr. Luises, you are having objections from a entire uh, community that is saying no. And you're not listening. And I would hope that this county commission would listen. This is our residents. These are the people that we serve as a county commission. This is your boss. The people, and the people are saying, uh, now, the people could change their mind, Mr. Luises, if you were transparent with them and you told them what you were doing. They could. I'm not saying they would. I'm saying they could if they had more information.
So in other words, if I tell you there's going to be a Toms out there on that property, but then it changes to a convenience store, what does that put me in position? A liar?
Well, I mean, uh, uh, you would have to submit and tell the people what you did. I mean, just be transparent. I'm I'm sorry, but if you just want it to be done with people uh, all around you objecting, you're one citizen and that's all you are, is one citizen of this county. And no one has a better standing than anyone else. And you, above all, should know the difficult position you have put your zoning and planning commissions in.
You you did verify that if I said going to be a convenience store out there and I changed it to a to a restaurant or vice versa, you would object to that.
I I was having no reason to. If once it's already been zoned commercial, I cannot do that.
Well, see,
I'm sorry, I can't. I mean, that would be more a reflection of you than the county.
Okay.
That would be more on you, a personal business person. And people may not wish to visit your place because they say we don't trust you. Maybe they say they would love to come. That is.
I kind of, I kind of get his his point, though. Like if he came in or any citizen came in with the plan, you know, they could present the plan, and if if the planning commission rezoned it, that person could go back on it as long as it's consistent with the zoning. You know, and that, you know, so, you know, they could come in and that's something that, you know, we've, you know, Angela has briefed us on before when people have come in and they say, we're only going to put in three yurts or whatever it is. And um, and Angela says, well, if we rezone it, they can put as many as they want, or, you know, whatever the deal is. So um, I'm not, I'm not sure that that would control anything in practical terms. Like I think they could legally do whatever they wanted, even if you know, they said it. And you're right, it would be a reflection on their integrity or or maybe a a business change. Maybe if they do the infrastructure studies or try to get rights away that aren't approved, then the plan might necessarily have to change if they can't accommodate the property. But um, I'm just not sure in practical terms that would serve anything.
I mean, that, but when you go back, that'll be, that'd be like the US Right Nineteen Quarter Management Plans, what Greg wants it to be. But development will not happen if you limit what they have to under B two, if you limit and only pick certain areas, development will not happen. That that's why it's it's developed, that's why it's wrote the way it's wrote. Because when a developer comes in, he says, okay, I want to develop this piece of property commercial. I don't know exactly what I want, but I think I can get this, this, and this. And then if you say you that what you have to do, development won't happen. It just, it just.
Right now, are you talking about a piece of property that is already zoned commercial or a piece of property that is zoned residential that he wants to do things? There is two different situations here, and you're confusing both. And you're confused with this. Not us, we are not.
Greg, only.
The issue, Tommy, the only issue here is if we're going to allow this property to be zoned commercial, one it's, once it is zoned commercial, I have a saying, you can't do anything about things you can't do anything about. Once it is uncommercial, once it goes through, it's done. There's nothing we can do about Doves Outlet Village. There's nothing we can do about Balls Ex on Town, Exxon, it's right across the street. It's already zoned. There's nothing we can do about. You will, this is not even on the agenda today because it's not there. However, the application to take residential property in a residential neighborhood who has full residence and zoning commercial is. And that's what I'm saying. I am against it because we have no idea it is an incomplete plan. And if the plan were more complete and more information were available, I I don't even know if we've addressed how we're going to apply utilities to this. That could be a very uh, a a a whole other issue. So in my opinion, in my opinion, and it is only my opinion as a private citizen, it is an incomplete plan. It has no merit, and it should be denied. Now, if in the future you wish to inform more uh, 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 commissions than the county of what you plan to do with it, maybe the county would be more av- av- uh, uh, available to say yes. But right now, the answer is no.
All right. Um, okay, wait, wait.
I want to do want to ask Greg one question, Ms. Taylor, if you don't mind. How many acres am I rezoning?
Nine, that I understand. Five, five on one, partially four on another.
Okay, so it's four hundred feet away from the nearest house on one, six hundred sixty-three feet away from the nearest house on the other. Mary lies right on commercial property. The other, that's the six hundred sixty-three feet away from what I want to rezone. Steve has property that joins theirs or is a hundred to a hundred fifty feet close to that commercial property. So that's, I mean, most of these properties are closer to Steve's and Mary's than what I want to rezone. There's a four hundred foot buffer in between one and a six hundred sixty-three feet buffer between the other.
And there's like what? But Tom, there's owned what? How they zone?
Well, there's not.
Every piece of property that you spoke of.
Partial in the state of Western Union joins residential somewhere.
I understand that, but what is it currently?
Listen, John. John, that's enough, that's enough. I, we've heard enough, we have heard enough on this. The issue right now, and I saw Anthony has returned to the room. The issue right now is not whether this is the right, you know, idea or or revisit state code and and zoning laws and the quarter management plan. The issue before, eh, eh, from my perspective as a commissioner voting on this is you know, what are what are Commissioner Brenneman and I going to do with the planning board's recommendation? And and for me, Anthony, you weren't here, um, John and I are split on this. Um, the planning commission said that they did not have a member of the board and seconded by another said he didn't have enough information. Uh, he was denying the application because he didn't have enough information, and I'm concerned that they did that. And I want to send the decision back to them to allow them to get the information they need to make a fully informed decision, even if it's no again. John, on the other hand, believes that there's a process. Okay, well, go ahead then.
The what we have is that we have a rural residential trying to go to a PUD or a planned unit of development. The four questions at at hand, what's it going to be? The sewage, the utilities, water, power, gas, et cetera, and access in and out. I want to support what the zoning board said because we have a board in place for a reason to look at everything. Regardless if they go with Commissioner Taylor's suggestion or my suggestion, he's going to either have to go to the Planning Board of Appeals or back to the zoning or zoning board of appeals or back to zoning board again, reset. So we're essentially saying the same thing, just two different ways.
And and may I, I want one other thing.
Greg, we're in the process of this, if you wouldn't mind having, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Um, so that's where we're at. I mean, we're saying the same thing, just two different ways. Um, regardless, it's going to require uh, the petitioner to come back with information. Uh, even though it's some is going to be proprietary and he's not going to be able to, but some things he may be able to answer. And then then come back either through the zoning board of appeals or through the zoning board again uh, to deliver the information back to us.
So Anthony, the the issue is John and I don't agree. And Tom, I mean, we we kind of agree, like he said. But he thinks the Board of Zoning Appeals should make the decision, and I think the planning commission should should ask for the information it needs and and make a decision and and send that decision to us before not send a decision to us and say, we didn't have an informa- enough information, so we're saying no. Um, so John and I are split and Tom can't vote. This is where we are.
Could we go into executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I think Tom should stay out. Yes, and so Gia, can you let everybody into Ruth's office? And um, John, I'll call your cell phone.
Okay. Oh, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
And.
All for purpose of legal advice.
On the issue that was currently addressed.
Second, and um, Tom, I wanted you to make a note on the agenda, um, the thing about late fees, paying late fees out of the fire levy money.
Okay.
Because that was on, I forgot to raise that when we did vouchers and invoices, but.
Commissioner Taylor, you're back on. Allison.
I am sorry, yes. I was talking, but I had muted my iPad.
All right, um, we are coming out of executive session and at that time, no, no uh, decisions were made. And at this point, we have a motion on the floor.
And I'm going to withdraw the motion, and um, I think John's going to have Anthony explain what's next.
Okay, councillor.
So at at this point, uh, the commission needs to determine whether or not there's any additional information that needs to be taken for the public here.
Okay, at this point in time, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a a motion to second. All is in favor. I.
I.
Sustained.
So at this point, the hearing is concluded, and at this point, the uh, county commission is going to take its decision in the matter under advisement, and the county commission will issue uh, a decision uh, at a later date. The the ordinance specifies the county commission has ten days to issue. Let me, let me back up. The ordinance says that county commission.
Councillor, can I get you to speak up to the microphone? Thank you.
Certainly.
So that way everybody on the internet can hear.
So basically, the ordinance specifies that the county commission shall endeavor to issue a decision within ten days. So at this point, there's some legal issues uh, that the county commission wants to flesh out, and they want some additional information before a decision on the petition and the planning commission's recommendation is made. So it's going to be taken under advisement. No decision on the matter will be uh, made today.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back into regular session and Chris, are you still on the line? Is Chris still on there?
Oh, yes.
Okay. There were questions. Tom, you want to go back into taking back everyone that?
No, it was with Allison started, if you don't mind.
Allison.
Okay, okay, okay. So um, there were three, three things that we had left to discuss, Tom. I didn't want us to lose sight. There was that estate matter. There was questions for Chris, which we're going to do now, and um, the issue of late fees on the vouchers and invoices.
Well, we have one more, too, if you don't mind, after the end of it. The gentleman from the SBA is here, just wanting to make a little presentation or talk about the SBA
disaster loans.
Disaster loans, if the commission doesn't buy them.
Well, I think, I mean, I think he could talk. Anthony?
Yes.
Can we, can we hear a presentation from him without having noticed it on the agenda?
Generally speaking, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, he's simply doing a presentation, and I'm not the commission is not going to be making a decision on anything, but it's still I still think it's incumbent upon the commission to put that on the agenda so the public knows that the presentation is going to be made so that if the public wants to be here to listen um, or listen for Zoom and or ask questions, they'll be in a position to do so.
I I know that he has been working with Jack. We were all on party to emails about that and that Jack is in the loop on the programming. And and I mentioned in in an email that uh, Jack should probably do a press release about how this assistance is distinguished from um, the other assistance that came out of the floods. Um, so, I mean, I I'm comfortable with Jack handling that stuff. I think he has a good grasp of of what we need to do based on his email to us. What about you guys?
I don't have a problem.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, if he'd like to come back, we'd put him on a future agenda. But in the meantime, you know, that for the substance, let's get him with Jack and make sure that, you know, we get the information to the public the way we usually do on the webs.
Okay.
Sites and stuff.
I guess we'll hear from Chris now. Is that right, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah. And so, Chris, the questions we had, one was, we were looking back on the um, broadband issues. We looked back through the minutes and and when Commissioner Brenneman had asked the question about, you know, some of the legwork you guys were doing and before we knew whether we were going to be the recipients of the Gig Ready Grant, which we all knew fell through. Um, and you guys at the time had said that the, you know, gig, that it would come out of the grant costs. But there was no discussion or vote from us about expending any funds. Um, at least it's captured in the minutes that about spending any funds if the Gig Ready fell through. And now that I know what I know about um, those programs, I I, you know, wish we had discussed that.
Yeah.
So um, so that's, so what I think is before us today, and Anthony, you tell me if I'm wrong. I think what's before us today now is is whether we're going to approve um, the money. You know, in in retrospect, even though we didn't do it in advance, whether we're going to uh, approve to pay that. And the the other question we had about the pool, how how is it, how is that four thousand different than the seventy-five thousand we already um, spent?
The four thousand was for that initial site assessments with the GPR work to see if it was even feasible to try to move forward with the pool. I think you guys had had like a proposal for like fourteen grand or something to go there and do a bunch of geotechnical drilling and stuff and and I was approached and about maybe seeing if it was even worth doing it. So that was the very first task order that we had signed with you guys. It was for four thousand two hundred fifty bucks. And that included um, the preliminary surveying, GPR, uh, we scanned the con- or scanned the bottom of the pool floor to see if the rebar was jeopardized and all that. And then from that point, um, I gave you a report. You all looked at the report, you reviewed the report, and then y'all decided it was worth to, worth it to move on to the next phase, which included the drilling and stuff. Now, you guys paid for the second phase of that of that project, but you did not pay that first phase.
Okay. Okay, so we, so we signed a task order on that and we had already voted and agreed to, to pay the four thousand. Okay, so that, that seems like a no-brainer to me, I don't.
Agreement for the broadband too, Allison, we have a signed agreement that you agreed to pay the money for the broadband. And I did tell you I would, I would uh, carry cost until the project got going. But now that the project is essentially dead, because the money that you had allocated for the match money has been spent now. Um, you, you guys can't expect me to carry eighteen grand with a small group, I mean, I'm a small engineering firm. I can't carry that kind of cost for indefinitely.
I, it, it's, I, I'm not sure we're asking that you do that, I ju- I just feel like we did some things kind of backwards. So you're saying that we signed a, a task order agreeing to pay those funds even if the grant fell through?
Yeah, we actually, yeah, and I, and I'm actually not invoice, I. I didn't invoice, like, we have, like, uh, itemized, you can bill X amount when this task is done, X amount this task is done. I did not go do that, so I think if I follow that task or, order agreement that we have signed with you guys, I could invoice more. But that seventeen nine hundred is just what we had in it. So I wasn't trying to.
No, I don't, I, I, nobody thinks you were trying to do anything inappropriate. I think this is just a lessons learned for everybody, because, you know, you know, we given gigs, gig readies, you know, lettered us and everything. We thought we were being funded, I mean, as you know, we waited all that time.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it, and then, you know, it fell through, so we ended up sitting on a lot of money that needed to be spent quickly, so um.
Yeah, it was, it was a rush for you, I do know that. But, but that's, that's what that is, that's, that's, that, and like I said, like we, all the preliminary mapping and stuff like that. And the routing was, was done, I think we ended up doing like sixteen different, yeah, Tom had wanted to see different routes. I think I did sixteen different uh, options for you, I think's what we did, sixteen different routes that, and with costing and all that stuff. And uh, you know, we had all that ready to go, uh, if. I mean, you're set, if you try to go after someone like this reconnect fee or reconnect money and stuff like that. Um, you know, that it, it's doable, I know Nicholas County's going after reconnect, but it's, it's like a fifty-fifty. Like they take out a loan and then they get a grant, I know that's how that reconnect's working, but um.
I mean, I'd be interested in a, in another meeting to hear more about that and if you guys have a proposal. But for the purposes of this, I'm satisfied with what uh, Chris has explained and I'd like to move that we approve those uh, payments to him. And, you know, we can just be more cautious in the future when we do something like this, that we make sure we agree to pay any upfront costs. Even if something falls through.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you guys, if you don't need anything, you, you give me a holler.
Will do.
We can set up, Allison, if you wanna have like a little, shoot me an email or something like that and, and maybe we could get with uh, John Tuggle. And, and maybe we could all sit down and talk to him about moving forward on trying to go after some money like what Nicholas County is doing. You know, he, he's got some good information on it and then, you know, we've, we've been helping them out with all the applications.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah, the sixteen routes that, that you uh, developed, could you send that to us?
Uh, yes, yeah, I'll send uh, PDFs to Ruth, that way she's got copies of all that mapping.
Yeah, and if you'll do the same thing about the pool, so we can make sure our park director has it, just in case he doesn't have everything, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll make a note, I'll send, I'll send her the pool reports that we've done. And the uh, the broadband uh, mapping and the routes.
Thank you so much.
If you guys want them hard copies, just let me know and I can make some hard copy prints of it and bring them by, like, next, next meeting I'm in, I can bring them by.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
My guest. Well, what do you wanna talk about now, John and Ms. Taylor? You wanna talk about the uh, conservation agency?
We've got that agreement and we have the um. The.
Right away.
Petition, yeah, the, the petition thing where they wanna abandon. Anthony, did you get a chance to read that one on the?
The petition for abandonment?
Yes.
Yeah.
You were gonna deal with the uh, conservation agency, agreed that, that's a, that's a quick one, thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
That's fine.
Okay, so I had the chance to talk with Judith Lyons about, when we were here before. I pointed out that the existing agreement didn't expire for another couple of years. Um, and Ms. Lyons uh, indicated that the, on page four, there's a couple of typographical errors. Where instead of referencing FCC for pay county commission, somebody had typed in SCT. So she wanted to correct that issue, so the, the revised agreement corrects that issue. The only other change is the revised agreement specifies that for the purposes of extending and terminating. The agreement that when you term of the agreement is one year and it will automatically renew for another year. When you get to the end of that initial one-year period. And that either party can terminate the agreement by providing the other party with thirty days notice. Under the old agreement, the agreement expired after five years and then it had to be, be timed by both parties of the version of that five-year period. So the, the new version simply corrects the typographical error and changes the termination provisions. So that the agreement automatically renews after one year and it continues to renew unless either side backs out. And I, I don't see any other issues with the agreement. Just one.
Okay, well, I, you guys have any questions?
No.
All right, I move that we approve that agreement.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And then Anthony, while Anthony's up there, do you wanna talk about that estate issue? I'm sorry, Tom, I, I can't.
No, that's okay, I was gonna ask Amy to make sure I got two of them in front, then we'll know which one.
The second one I sat down, yeah.
Okay.
I'll take care of the rest.
Anthony.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and, and talk about that ban, abandonment.
So I had a question about it, I mean, I, I read it and my question is, what? Is there a liability to the county, I mean, they, they talk about it, the dangerous slope and all this other stuff. So the reasons that they don't want it, that they wanna abandon the property, are those reasons that we shouldn't want the property either? I mean, I, I just don't, you know, or what's, what's typical?
Um, hang on just a second, it's been, I looked at this a while ago and I need to, I need to check something.
Okay, well, in the meantime, John and Tom, um, with regard to the vouchers and invoices, I know we approved that. But I, I forgot to mention that in going through um, some of the fire vouchers, there were a couple of things. I know we did not approve paying for Dr. Pepper and stuff like that, cause I had asked GM Wilbert about it. But the other thing I noticed is that, um, and, and according to Gia, this has happened in the past. That um, one of the fire departments had submitted a request for us to reimburse for late fees. Where they hadn't paid their storage rental on time. And it's my view that we should not use excess tax dollars or any tax dollars to pay late fees. What are your all thoughts?
For them to come in and speak to us about that. You wanted to come tell us why they, like. Why we're having late charges on the bills. We shouldn't have late charges.
I, I guess, John, from my perspective, they could have all the late charges they want, but the taxpayer shouldn't have to pay for them, you know what I mean? Like, um, you know, if they wanna pay their bills later, if that's how they're managing, if, if it's, they needed that money for something else in the department. And, I mean, late fees aren't substantial, but, but I don't think the taxpayer should be paying the fees, whatever the cause of. Cause they might be justified in paying late, somebody, you know, like in the case of Montgomery where Chief Filiagi passed away, they might be late on stuff. But um, but I don't think the fire levy, the fire department has other budget money that it can pull from. Um, to cover that kind of thing. And, you know, but as far as, you know, excess levy funds that we're in control of, I just don't think we should be paying late fees. Or reimbursing for late fees.
Agreed with Ms. Taylor and I, that they should, we shouldn't have. Uh, I, I only know of one fire department that had a issue with personnel and getting their bills paid. Um, and I could understand that one with the circumstances, uh, but I think that one's been rectified. And actually, I don't feel that they had any late payments. Steve, can you speak to that? With Luke Creek.
Well, there is a time when you can well pay. But as far as Luke Creek, yeah, but that's uh. There hasn't been any requests or minimum like.
Okay, alright.
So it's that's uh, that. Luke Creek can't ask for reimbursement, because they have no money in the fire levy account, it's under a hundred dollars.
Okay.
And then that's an issue that uh, we need to come to some way to rectify that. Uh, so they've been, uh, there's. I'm gonna tell it, it's out of the state church.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I, I feel like that's another issue altogether, we need to put on a, another agenda if we have a fire department out of money. I don't think the fire departments can, you know, this is a reimbursement process, this is not a funding process. So, you know, the levy cannot fund a fire department, it can only reimburse expenses. But, but I feel like that's something we, we should probably put on our next meeting agenda, if Luke Creek is in trouble and figure out what, if anything, we can do as a commission, help it. But um, with regard to the late fees, there were some late fees, am I right, Gia? Or did you hold those out waiting for us to make a decision?
There are some late fees and there were late fees.
And they weren't, and they weren't Luke Creek, it wasn't Luke Creek.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want, I don't wanna call out who it is, I don't.
Petition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um.
Hold on, let me go see if I can track.
Because he apparently color coded.
Yeah, there was.
So can, can we re- revisit that motion about the, the vouchers and invoices and exclude um, late fees?
Anthony, I think she's asking. Um, were the late fees already pulled out and not processed, or were they processed with all the firemen's?
They're in, they're in there, I mean.
Have the late fees already been paid?
By the fire department, yes, but not by the fire levy. They haven't been reimbursed.
Okay, I mean, I think, I think the county commission, if it wants to revisit a prior issue, can, I mean, we need to, we need to move to reopen. That particular issue. Uh, and then vote on it.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we reopen the vouchers and invoices um, to address the late fees that are contained within them.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. And then I'm gonna move that we approve the vouchers and invoices, all of them, including uh, the one we just heard from New River Engineering. With the exception of the late fees submitted by the one particular fire department.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Now, is that other besides Anthony? Just the abandoned road is like.
Okay, Allison, what was your question on the abandonment again?
My question was, i- in, in the case of an abandonment, especially when there's liability associated. I mean, I think, I think, and I understand the property owner's desire not to have that property, but then what does that mean?
You're, I don't think you're, I think you're missed, okay, now I understand why I was confused.
Okay.
So essentially, um, is there, is there a way that, can you see the um, petition?
Hold on, I'm gonna open it on my phone, I had it up on my computer, but I had to walk outside, cause there was too much noise, so just a second here.
And unfortunately, the, the copies that we have are black and white, so this isn't gonna show as well.
Yeah, that's, okay, I've got it.
Okay, so basically, can you, can you find exhibit D? On the petition.
Oh, mine are in color, the maps, is that what you're talking about?
The what?
The maps are in color on my um, in our packet.
My packet, everything's black and white.
Okay, so, okay, I can see it, yeah.
Oh, um, Amy just brought up a rather important issue.
What?
Said that this is on the agenda, this issue is on the agenda for twenty-fourth.
They published it that way.
And it was published to be dealt with on July twenty-fourth.
Oh, well then why, okay, cause I thought it was mentioned, it's in our packet, so I thought that's something I had to hear.
But, but just to give you a, a heads up of what this is about is, there's a section of road. There, there's a section of property at the end of E Street that is not being used as a road. But it was previously designated as a road. And that's the grassy part, so what, what the property owners are asking is, they're asking the county to abandon. That portion of the roadway that isn't being used as a road, and if the county commission agrees with that. Basically, under West Virginia law, what happens is, is the abandoned portion is divided down the middle. And the property owner on either side of the uh, area designated as the road becomes the owner of that property.
Well, let me, can interrupt you just a second, does a road go into the river?
The.
Leads to the river.
The road stops before it gets to the river.
Who owns the property between the end of the road and the river?
It's a right, it's a right-of-way for a road, it was set aside to be a road all the way to the river.
So the two property owners on both sides get to split it if they want.
It's the same property owner, they all, it's all the same people, I spoke with them. And the reason they're wanting to shut it down is because they wanna be able to mow it easily.
Technically, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Pick nits, there's a limited liability company that owns the property on one side. There are a brother and sister that own the property on the other side, but consistent with what Amy said. The brother and sister, um, if I remember correctly, are the.
The sister is part of the.
The limited, yeah, she's a, she's a member manager of the limited liability company.
So maybe i- i- it, it would help me bet, to better understand if you explain to me what an abandonment is in this respect. Because I, I don't think I, I understood that and that's why I was confused.
E Street, E Street is designated, when, way back when, when this area was platted out. E Street was designated as a roadway all the way to the river. Now, what, what has happened, and this happens fairly regularly, for whatever reason. The, the last portion of the area set aside for E Street was never used as a road. The road stops before it gets to the end of the designated area. And as I read in the petition, it basically says that it's a grassy area that slopes from the edge of the pavement down to the river. So essentially, they are asking the county commission to abandon that portion of the roadway. That is, they're asking the county commission to abandon that portion of property set aside for the roadway. Which isn't actually being used as a road. And if the county commission agrees with the abandonment, then that property is divided down the middle. And the adjoining property owner uh, acquires title to the one half next to their property. The property owner on the other side of the road, the uh, roadway acquires title with the one-half portion of the property on the other side.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand, okay, thank you for explaining that.
Sure, they're asking the county to abandon its right to utilize that property as a road.
As a road, okay, that helps a lot, thank you.
Is there sidewalks on that, on that? Okay, I can't tell if it's mad.
The front, front of the property there is, but then.
That's what I was asking, in front of the property.
Yeah, but then it breaks to allow.
Yeah, but then it breaks to allow people to go down through there. We've had few properties come in from that local area asking for us to abandon roadways going down to the river.
Were there any that, that you, that you guys didn't approve, John?
No, there wasn't, because we didn't have anybody come in and stop them. Now, there was a couple in other places that people come in and, and asked that we didn't because they were still using those.
Which ones did we do, John? Me, which ones did we do here?
Oh, they were, it's not in that block, it was a block up.
Okay, can you have a copy of that from the twenty-fourth?
A copy of.
Where we abandoned, were any of these roads down through here?
They can pull them through the minutes.
No, I'm saying that, I'd like to have a copy. Cause we're, we're making a decision, we're twenty-fourth, is the hearing from the twenty-fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Bye, everybody.